Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for June 3, 2024. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern to speak into the microphone and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. At this time, I'd like to introduce members of the Planning Commission. On my far left is Ken Lackey, Assistant Secretary. To his right is Carol Fisher, the Secretary. On my immediate left is Connie Gah, Recording Secretary, and on my right is Ray Woski, Commissioner. Troy Urbis, who is the Vice Chair, has an excused absence this evening. Members of staff present this evening: David Roller, City Planner, and Ryan Holmesy, City Planner. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of May 2024. Do we have any comments on the minutes as presented here this evening?
Just a bit of one more, correction, before we approve them. Under the test of, uh, test of, uh, here, comments from Leonard Petrick, there's a misspelling of, uh, Renwood Drive. There's no W in Renwood. It's just R-E-N-W-O-D.
All right. Any other comments, corrections? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified here this evening?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is new business. It is a record plan approval at 3100 Far Hills Avenue. It is PC-24-006. And I believe this one's Mr. Holmesy?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. This is a fairly straightforward request. It involves the properties at 3100 Far Hills Avenue, which is the James Free location, and then the property kind of to the east of that, I'm Cushing, which is 100 Cushing Avenue. They're owned by the same group, and they're seeking to just consolidate those two properties into one. The property on, at 100 Cushing is about 7,700 square feet, and the property where it contains the James Free building, which was consolidated with the property that used to contain the Hanson Audio about a year or two ago, is about 31,000 square feet. So collectively, they'll, they'll be about 0.9198 acres. So on the screen now, those are the existing lot lines, and what they propose to do is to really just delete that one lot line in between the residence to the east and then the commercial property. And again, here's the record plan. It's fairly straightforward with the existing lot lines and the proposed lot lines. The only comment from a standpoint of the subdivision standards is that the final Mylar needs to be certified by the surveyor before the Planning Commission provides any signatures, and that is recommended as a condition by staff. Also, the, the existing zoning of the two part, the two lots is somewhat unique. The property at 100 Cushing is zoned R2, and the property at 3100 Far Hills is zoned B business. And back in late 2014, early 2015, an ordinance was approved by council that approved a rezoning of that 100 Cushing property with three conditions, one of which the intention is to meet one of those conditions tonight, which is to consolidate the two properties into one. And those are the three conditions on the screen now. The first one is that the lots located at 100 Cushing and 3100 Far Hills be combined into a single lot. That's what they're trying to do tonight. The other condition is that the lot at 100 Cushing be incorporated into the existing planning and development for 3100 Far Hills Avenue as a parking lot with a design, including without limitation, buffer yard screening and landscaping, and they're working through the design of that right now based on what our zoning requirements are. And then the final requirement is that a restrictive covenant running with the land be recorded, which prevents the expansion of any business conducted from time to time on the new lot onto the adjoining parcels located at 104 and 100, 104 Cushing and 105 Rock Hill. And that restrictive covenant has been recorded, and it is, it was included as an attachment F with the staff report. So the zoning standards, minimum lot size, minimum frontage. The B district does not have any minimum lot sizes or minimum frontages, so those standards are met. And then the last item zoning related that we look at are the minimum setbacks, and this proposed record plan would not create any nonconforming setbacks, so those standards are met. And finally, when it comes to the subdivision standards, I already mentioned the one staff recommended, recommended condition is that the plat be certified by the surveyor before the Planning Commission provides their signatures. And staff does have a recommendation, but before I get to that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Mr. Holmesy?
I don't have anything.
None? No questions? Do we have your final recommendation?
Sure. The recommendation is that the Planning Commission motion to approve the record plan, case number PC-24-006, with the following condition, and that is that the final record plan be sealed by the surveyor.
All right. Unless we have any additional comments, Ms. Fisher, I believe you have a motion.
We do have a motion. Whereas an application has been received from Michael Herman, manager of Lasada Inc., owner of the properties at 3100 Far Hills Avenue and 100 Cushing Avenue, Kettering, Ohio, 45429, requesting approval of a replat of the seven hundred properties. This replat would combine the two lots in a single lot being 0.9198 acres in size. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot. And whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein. I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for the James Free replat, Section 2 Record Plan, be approved with the following condition, which must be met prior to the provision of Planning Commission signatures by the final record.
Did you want to read the condition? Sorry.
Please.
Okay, sorry.
The final record plan drawing to be sealed by the surveyor, approved this third day of June 2024.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Apologize, Ms. Fisher, for interrupting your motion.
That's okay.
I will try better in the future.
My mic wasn't on.
My mic wasn't on.
Oh.
You got distracted.
Okay. Not a problem.
Which is easy.
All right. Next item on the agenda is conditional use. 2850 Donation Circle. It is PC-24-008, and this is a public hearing. Mr. Roller?
Thank you, Mr. Rathman. We are in receipt of an application for a conditional use approval for the property located at 2850 Donation Circle. You see it here outlined in red in a dash line. On the left of the property is Woodman Drive. To the east is Donation Circle, which comes off of College Drive. And just out of frame, on the bottom of the, of the image there would be Research Park. So this is located at the southeast, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the Miami Valley Research They are requesting a conditional use approval for a 58,000 square foot elementary school, grades K through 5. That would be about 425 students, 25 faculty. They'd have about accommodations for about 12 buses and approximately 100 parking spaces. Again, they're requesting approval from Planning Commission. This requires you to review and either approve, approve with conditions, continue, table or deny. Again, the scope of the Planning Commission, you can always add standards to mitigate potential negative impacts, but we can't waive any standards here. This is located in the floodplain, and so they are working through some issues in regards to development within the floodplain, but we are confident that they'll be able to execute that without any problems. The proposal that you see here, and this is a conceptual site plan at this point, we're not really here to approve or, you know, really get into the nitty gritty of it, but this is provided for you to kind of see it. Donation Circle is there on the right-hand part of the screen. You can see that cul-de-sac there. The access drive is, is, is towards the east of the property with the building kind of in the central location. And then there would be a portion of the site that would be reserved for floodplain management. Let's call it that. Here you see another image showing kind of a concept of what the, the massing would be for the building in, in relationship to the property. We have provided a review of the application in accordance with the City of Kettering zoning code. We are prepared to go through that in a detailed fashion if you'd like, but we can also just summarize that if you, if you prefer. But happy to answer any questions that you have before we get into that.
Any specific questions?
I do not.
Looks like there's no traffic access off of Woodman. Is that right?
For the time being, we don't have a, a plan as part of this proposal that shows that, but I believe that they're working through some issues in regards to fire access that would, that would place an access point off of Woodman Drive, but we, we're, these are things that are being worked through as far as the site planning process goes. So we are working through that. And that, that does bring up one of the late coming information that came to us over the weekend regarding traffic, and I'll get into that in just a minute.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I'm all for STEM schools. Do, do they have much room there to expand in the future? Should they choose to do so?
That, that I don't know.
I was looking at the, can you go back to the map where it shows the layout?
Most of the, most of the area that you see that's, that's the blank in the top left-hand portion of the site?
Uh-huh.
Most of that's, that is the floodplain.
That's floodplain. Okay. Can they go northward a little bit?
That, that's a question that would probably be better answered by, by, you know, the applicant or, or, you know, maybe somewhere down the line as far as figuring out what the scope, the total scope would be. But we, we assume that they, that they can meet their, their program on the site that they're proposing.
I mean, this is a public hearing, so anybody who is listening at home, you know, I'd say, let's give us the detail.
Sure thing. There are nine total criteria items A through I found within Section 1150308 of the approval criteria for the conditional use approval process. The first criteria is Criteria A. The proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. We feel that this proposal is conditionally met for this criteria because that's something that everybody has to do. They have to meet the, the rules and regulations of the City of Kettering in order to get a permit. So this is kind of an assumed thing, but we can't ensure it until after they get underway. Criteria B. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located, and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of person living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood than with any other use permitted by right within the same district. The proposed improvements would be in conformance with the aesthetics of the research park, the character of the adjacent buildings. They, MVRP, or the Miami Valley Research Park, has a privately enforced set of design standards and a design review process to ensure compatibility. So the proposed elementary school is compatible with the existing research and business park. We feel that this condition is met. Criteria C. The adequate utilities shall be provided. Again, we're going to work through that through the permitting process if, if they get that far. So that's something that we would, we would absolutely make them perform. Criteria D. Adequate measure shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on public roads. The site is accessed, as you saw, off of Donation Circle, which is accessed then from College Drive. Both of those streets are not heavily trafficked, and they're more than adequate to accommodate the amount of traffic that would be generated by this use as well as proposed uses to the south, as well as any expansion that would be to the adjacent property to the northeast, the Resonetics property. However, as, as was mentioned, there is the possibility, or I'm sorry, there is a requirement that the Fire Department is, is looking to have met, that there be an access point off of Woodman Drive. And so I know we're working through that. We feel that this, this requirement is satisfied. Over the weekend, we did get some information about some concerns about traffic from the neighboring properties. Apparently, there is a traffic study that's also being conducted, and I'm sure the applicant can, can enlighten us on that as well. But we are interested in making sure that everybody is, has a chance to work together and make sure that they get along and have some good traffic management. So we are including a modified motion this evening that reflects that. Criteria E. That the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Contrary to what some people might think, elementary schools don't do any of those things, even though kids can be a little rambunctious sometimes. But that requirement, we feel, is satisfied. Criteria F. The proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Proposed K through 5 building would not interfere with any of the nearby business park uses. We have Life Connection to the south, and we have Resonetics to the northeast. Both of them are, you know, your regular run-of-the-mill business park uses. This wouldn't have any effect on them. Criteria G. The proposed use shall not impede the orderly development improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district. Again, the proposed use wouldn't have any effect. Criteria H. And we're almost done. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The addition of a new K through 5 STEM-focused elementary will provide education and opportunity to the children of the community and the region. So we feel that that requirement is satisfied. Criteria I. The public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. We don't feel that there's any negative impacts here or potential for negative impacts to the surrounding uses. Dayton Regional STEM School serves a diverse and regional wide population. Again, the construction of a new K through 5 elementary school would provide educational opportunities and promote the general welfare of the community. So we feel that this requirement is satisfying. Again, going back to the issues that we, that we discovered over the weekend, that there are some potential conflicts there, not necessarily functionally, but that we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to work together and iron out any, any potential conflicts. So we are recommending a modified motion to that end. Any questions at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Roller?
No.
No.
No questions at this time. If the applicant is here and would like to address the commission, now is your opportunity. Just ask you to come forward to the lectern and give your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Brock Russell. I am with SHP out of Cincinnati, Ohio. I am representing the Dayton Regional STEM School. So we're very happy to be here, and thank you for the consideration. To address some concerns, yes, we are in the midst of a traffic study. The school has not yet determined their schedule, but we are looking to be a good neighbor. So we are looking to look at schedules, staffing, shift changes, and the school will try and determine their schedule based on that to, to make sure that we don't see added congestion or, or any conflicts in the area. So once that traffic study is completed, and we expect that within the next week or so, we will go over those results, deliver that study, and take that into consideration with the school. To address concerns of expansion in the future, the Dayton Regional STEM School is a public school serving many districts, but they also control their enrollment. So at this point in time, they have a controlled number of students. So essentially, it goes by lottery and admittance. So at this point in time, they do not see a need for expansion in the future. We have looked at that, and there are some options, but it is not a strong consideration of the district.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What's the timeline of the project?
We would love it to be a less aggressive schedule, but we are an aggressive schedule. We are looking at fall of '25. It would be much different if it was an existing school, but because it will be a new enrollment with new students, they will do a phased approach. So they will take three classes. They will do kindergarten first, second, and fourth the first year, and then they will add in the other two grades to go to full enrollment the following year. So they are looking to be open and serving new students in fall of 2025.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Aggressive is right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Since this is a public hearing, if there's anyone out there in the audience who wishes to address the commission with any questions, comments regarding this for or against, now is your opportunity. Seeing as that no one is coming forward, do we have a recommendation?
We certainly do. Our recommendation is for approval with one condition. That is that a traffic management plan be prepared in coordination with the Miami Valley Research Park by the, by the applicant. Such traffic management plan would then be submitted to the zoning administrator for review and approval.
All right. Any questions on the recommendation? Mr. Woski, I believe you have a motion.
We, we close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, we do. My apologies. Since it's a public hearing, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. Now, Mr. Woski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the following motion. Whereas an application has been received from Brock Russell. SHP, agent for Dayton Regional STEM School, requesting approval of a conditional use located at 2850 Donation Circle. And whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a public hearing on June 3, 2024. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a conditional use to allow a new K through 5 elementary school, and whereas the Planning Commission adopts the findings of facts presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a conditional use to allow a new K through 5 elementary school be approved with the following condition. Number one, a traffic management plan be prepared in coordination with the Miami Valley Research Park. Such traffic management plan should be submitted to the zoning administrator for review for approval adopted by the Planning Commission this third day of June 2024. I move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments on the proposed motion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. All right. Next item on the agenda, as audience participation. For any items not on the agenda, is anyone out there who wishes to address the commissions on items not on the agenda? Seeing as none, we'll move on to other business. Signing of plats.
Oh, we don't have any.
Communications and reports.
None at this time, except...
Ryan looked like he was going to say something.
Hold on a moment. I wanted to go, kind of like what we did at the last meeting. The process of getting work sessions together for really, really long meetings about zoning code amendments is proving to be a little difficult. So rather than doing that, we'll talk about one other potential amendment that we're working on, similar to the last meeting where we talked about uncovered front porches and sheds and some of those regulations. We have, we have another code section that I wanted to kind of brush, talk about a couple exciting topics about driveways and parking areas in residential districts. Just because this is something that we get a lot of questions about and permit applications about, and people want to widen their driveway to add more parking to their, to their lot. In Kettering's code, can, can be a little bit difficult to deal with, and at least understand. You can, we've gotten pretty good at explaining it, but sometimes we still have to tell people no when it might not make sense to tell them no. And just to go over some of the applicable provisions, we have the definitions for driveway and parking space, and then we have driveway width restrictions, and then we have permitted locations for off-street parking areas. And then finally, we do have a little exemption to allow certain residential properties with two or fewer dwelling units to add parking to the front yard, even if they don't meet all of our other requirements. So just to orient everyone, right now, there's just a property in town, standard subdivision lot. The area boxed in red is the driveway, of course, and the way that's defined, the driveway is supposed to connect to a legal parking space. In this case, it dead-ends into the two parking spaces in the garage, which is technically in the side yard of this property. And then we have the maximum width requirements. For most residential properties in the city, the maximum width of your driveway is 30% of the lot frontage, which we're not proposing to change that. That number seems to work just fine. But we also have a provision where you're allowed to have parking spaces. And in most residential areas, standard residential neighborhoods in the city which fall within the village and neighborhood patterned district, you're not permitted to have parking spaces in the front yard of your property. You're permitted to have a driveway, and you can park in your driveway wherever it is, but that needs to dead-end into a legal parking space either in the side or the rear yard. So going back to that same property, they have got a roughly 16-foot wide driveway today. If they came in and wanted to add an eight-foot expansion like this, which would meet our, they're allowed to have about a 24-foot wide driveway, this wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to approve this today because that creates a parking space in the front yard that dead-ends into a sidewalk in a landscaping area next to the house. So to get, to get approval, they would need to expand the driveway at least eight feet back and eight feet wide from the house, which would, and that comes from, that's the minimum size of a compact parking space in the city, 16 by 8. So that means that this new driveway expansion dead-ends into a legal parking space in the side yard. And another, and another challenge that comes up, we have some neighborhoods where, a lot of neighborhoods that were developed throughout the 50s and 60s, they're single-story ranch houses, one-car garage, they have usually three bedrooms, one bath. And it's not uncommon for people to want to convert some or all of their garage into a master bedroom and a master bath. The issue with that is that now creates an illegal parking space in the front yard because the driveway, which used to dead-end into the parking space in the side yard, is no longer conforming. Suddenly, your park, your required parking space now is in the front yard. So if you have room, you technically have to reroute your driveway and create a parking pad next to the house, and then remove part of your driveway in front of your new resident conversion. Now, the one exception to that is, and this is just word for word from the code, if you're a residential use consisting of two, two dwelling units or fewer, which, and you have frontage on an arterial thoroughfare or collector street where no street, on-street parking is permitted, you are permitted to expand your driveway toward the nearest lot line. you are permitted to expand your driveway toward the nearest lot line, and as long as it's parallel to the driveway. But this is like West Shroop. There's a few areas of town where this is permitted. But most neighborhoods, this doesn't apply. And what we've talked about internally is basically expanding this section to be anywhere in the village or the neighborhood pattern district, you can expand. We don't want to allow you to have more driveway than what our code allows, but allow people, if they do a garage conversion, they don't have to reroute their driveway. And if they want to widen their driveway to an amount that meets the 30% maximum width, they don't have to add that pad next to their house. And another thing that comes up, not a lot, but it does happen, people want to only add a few feet to their driveway to kind of connect to a sidewalk next to their house so they can get their trash in and out. They can't do that either because they have to add enough to connect to a parking space next to the house. And we want to be, we want to, we want to be able to approve things like this. Now, there was a reason that these provisions were created. If you go by and see someone parked in front of a garage conversion that the exterior facade is designed in a way that it looks kind of weird, it doesn't look the best, but our infill standards can, in our new architectural standards that were adopted in 2015, give us a little bit more control to make sure that that's done in a way that fits with the rest of the house. So I just wanted to get some feedback tonight if there are any...
Ryan, could I ask a question at this point?
Of course.
How many houses, because I've seen quite a few houses, at least it seems to me there are quite a few, that have converted their garage to a living room or whatever? How many houses would this impact if we started to enforce this strictly?
Well, you're talking about the proposed provision that makes it easier?
Are you talking about not current non-conforming?
Well, hmm, good question. I'm not sure. Maybe the current non-conforming.
There's, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but there's several houses that have done pre-2015, or unfortunately, without permits, who've converted garages. The exact number, I can't tell you, but there's quite a few that are non-conforming today. And there's two or three over the last year where people have wanted to convert their garage, and this provision either stops them or adds a tremendous cost to the project that, the point of the discussion tonight is to find out, is that cost worth it? And there's been several people who've only wanted to add a few feet for a sidewalk who have not been able to do it, but an exact number, I don't know. We have several neighborhoods around town that, like Huber South, where it would become very difficult to do a garage conversion because of this standard.
Mm-hmm.
The exact number, I don't know. I can do more research and get back to you, though, if you want me to.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had a ballpark idea of how many folks this may impact and their, their cost of living in Kettering, if they are, if they have to pay to conform.
My experience with this has been, there's been just as many people who, this dissuades them from doing anything as there are people who just go ahead and do it. So, but it doesn't seem like something that makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of layers of the onion that are there for the regulations, and all it does is just, it just makes things a little bit more complicated, and it keeps people from doing something that is kind of a normally expected thing that they should be able to do.
Any other questions, comments?
It makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree. It makes sense to me.
Okay.
Okay. And again, we're not proposing to allow a wider percentage of the front yard to be covered. It's purely just not having to, because sometimes there's just not room. Like this example right here, there's probably not eight feet next to the house to add a pad.
Right.
And three-bedroom, one-bath house, adding a bathroom is pretty critical. And one thing we have, I have noticed recently over the last couple of years is, for a while, people would just move, buy a bigger house, and just range like 2%, no problem. They're staying put now because they can't find a place to move to, and they're trying to upgrade their homes, and it can be kind of, this can add a tremendous cost.
One of the other things that we noticed, too, just from, there was a recent person that came in for an application to do one of these, and there was, you know, some talk about it, and we went on Google Street View to look and see what else was around because the person had said, well, everybody else has it. And most of the time when people say that, that's not always true, but in this case, we did look around at their street, and it was, and it was a large majority of the homes did not have a driveway that connected to a garage. They deadended right into the house. It almost looked like that was the model for when they were built originally. So in some cases, you know, this, that is the standard of the neighborhood. You're not doing anything weird. That's, everything is like that already. So...
Anything else, Ray? You look like you're mulling stuff over...
Oh, I'm just, no, I'm just thinking back to the days when I was on city council. I'd get complaints and calls from people because they tried to do something kind of like this, and then the city said, no, you can't do that. Went back and forth, round and round a few times.
Yeah, that's...
Yep.
That's pretty standard.
It seems, it seems like it's taken a long time to work itself out, though. I mean, you know, this is kind of a really inefficient process, if you really... We'll speed it up next time.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other topics under communications and reports? Planning Commission comments?
Oh, yeah. This is off-topic totally, but tomorrow, Tuesday, there's going to be another solar storm, which means there's a chance you may see the aurora borealis if you travel north of Dayton, get away from the city lights. But it's a much weaker solar storm than the one we had just a few weeks ago. So good luck. Hope there's no clouds in the sky, and you may get to see something.
The last time, I drove like an hour north, and I couldn't see anything. And then I got home and got online, and people were like, from my backyard in Kettering, and it looked awesome. Then I found out, look at it through your phone camera, and I'm like, yeah, missed that part.
Yeah, I missed it, too.
But pictures were great, so...
That's all I have.
All right. I have no comments. So at this time, I will adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for June 3, 2024, until our next regularly scheduled meeting at 7:37 PM.